So, um, you'll please.
Chairperson Iris Ramos here. Board member Terry Burney Desette here. Board member Nancy Cottington, right there. Board member Jacob McAlwray, absent. Board member Dorothy Tashin, here. Board member Nancy, absent, and Kelly, I love her, please, here. Y'all have a word.
Okay, so, well, we're barred with, um, the, um... How about, um?
I might have to, I have a tough question. I live on Dulittle, we're in good shape. Uh, on Jack Miller's Drive, uh, and I realize a lot of these trees are probably golf course property, but when I, every time I drive up Jack Miller's Drive and see that big dead tree, I mean, dead, what's gonna happen to those big dead trees in our, those cities? Do we know? Anybody have?
Is it in our right of way, can you tell, or is it on the golf course?
I would say, I'm going to, that it's on the golf course, because it's right behind, um, the house that they built on the corner of Jack Miller, Miller and Book Cove.
The, the new one that's...
Yeah, that new red brick, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's right in their backyard.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's big, it's big and it's dead. I mean, it's totally dead.
Yeah. Kevin, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's in our right of way, it's something we'll be dealing with.
Correct.
Golf course, all we can do is persuade them to do something, I guess, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
What, one piece of the dead, you know?
I, I really don't know. I've become really focused on that tree and on the, uh, on Dulittle. If you go straight to the camp, okay, like, you're going to the gate, look to the left, they clean that little area right there, but right beside that little area right there is, is an area that's driving me crazy, and that's why I asked Jeff to give me Danny's number. Suzanne was very helpful and gave me his number for the camp, because I'm gonna clean that up. I'm more than willing to help. I have a little saw. I have muscles, uh, so I'm just gonna talk to them, because Jeff told me that that, if you're go down to Dulittle and you look across the street from my house, that's on the camps.
Oh, for you.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be, I would talk to Danny.
Yeah, Leo, all that land on the other side of Dulittle.
That's what I thought. Okay, alright, okay. It just drives me crazy, personally.
Like, I'll look at that tree and I'll see if it's on the right of way. If it's on private property, it's really hard to...
I know.
Do anything, um, just because of property rights, you know, you don't want anybody coming down on your property.
Right.
And telling you what to do, so, but, uh, you know, I can talk with the, if it is on the golf course, I can, I can inquire and see if we can...
Maybe encourage, they...
Encourage, they've been busy. Yeah, they, they have more than they can handle.
Uh, and I went over there and I said, "It's not my business, you shoot your tree." But as I sat on my porch and looked out at that tree, there is a big limb who's hanging on to your life, and I told him, "Think about it, I won't name names, but we all know somebody that sued their neighbor because he was running and a tree fell on him." And I said, "I'm just sharing that with you, because if you don't look at it like I do, uh, you may not even know it's there, but it's still there, but I mow there. I'm nice and I mow their yard, them, all the way up to the, uh, golf path, the cart path, so, anyway."
You're also very kind, bringing it up with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check this, but if there's anything we can do, I'll share with you.
Yeah, I just didn't want a lawsuit. Like I said, I can look at it and I can see it hanging, and it's the limb under it that is supporting it, but that doesn't mean...
Well, there's also potential for harmed property and life.
Sure.
Just lawsuits.
Right.
Um, I don't think we're supposed to make suggestions, but sometimes a bit more speaks louder than the stronger word.
Okay, okay. That's all I have to say. I just love trees. We do too, you're the right one. I just like to clean up stuff, it just looks better. Take that out of my mouth.
That's good.
So I didn't catch your name, Carol.
Carol. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I live on Dulittle.
I got that. Yeah, you're welcome to stay for the rest of...
I may not stay real long.
Yeah.
Just got off the writing a lot more.
Yeah, I know, man, exactly. But, uh, if you don't hear something, uh, you know, feel free to email me or Suzanne, and then we can, you know, follow up again with that, so, like I said, if you don't hear something, email one of us.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I think if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna wander back home. Thank you for what you do, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good afternoon.
You too. Bye, bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, so, that's all. We'll move on to the consent calendar, which includes your approval of the minutes. And Suzanne just graciously put them in front of me.
Sure, they're lost. Erin, thank you. Those are your signature.
Those, yeah. They were in, the minutes were in the packet, and those are just the ones that you signed for all of ours, once, once, once they get approved.
First, the agenda, and we say, just a minute, we want to send those out to you guys. If anything else, I'd like to be able to send them on your laptop.
So, if it's, if it's, um, available online, if it's, yeah, stuff is available.
I even went there to read and, um...
I have a doctor here, but it was like, I sort of remember seeing, you know, that, that one, we've been out, no?
This is something, you get it? And the link to the main page, the inventory, yeah, there's a lot of...
So, um, so, these are up for approval. And it's, um, and are they approved by the...
Would you like to send for motion to, uh, to approve?
Yes. And that was right above, we just said, listen. Thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve.
No.
Not that you... And then next is, I'm slow on it.
Yes, it's bad.
Very quick.
Then we will start off with board member Terry Burney Desette.
Yes.
Board member Nancy Cottington, yes. Board member Dorothy Tashin, yes. And chairperson Iris Ramos.
I have a little question.
Sure.
And, um, so I guess the answer is, I'd like to talk about this. I don't remember saying that we would begin on number five, um, our tree inventory, once there was an arborist on board. I think we discussed it, that we decided to do it in July, not just when an arborist... Does anybody remember that?
Watched the video, I normally watch the videos when I do those minutes, and, um, that was, I'm trying to remember who originally made the motion and then was approved for a mini survey, and then that amended motion, well, not amended, it was replacing the main motion.
Okay, sorry.
That's right.
I think we were planning to make sure to say that she got it off, and he had two forty, um, because I think each time you go out to the hardware, it's saying, um, that he could further exist, um, you know, with the inventory. With the, um, with the mini, mini inventory, we would take the mini inventory and then he would run forward to, how is she, they are currently on power, or... But I, I think, I mean, maybe it's in our report today about the possibility of people being interviewed, and, um, so I don't know if that, if it makes a big difference if we have to wait for the arborist, or if we can just go ahead and do it, we have a ready for the arborists.
So, there was talk, discussion about how the tree inventory, a bunch of the certified arborists, who was on the RFP, um, and mentioned the previous tree board, who listed on the previous tree inventory, defects, locations, transience, species, um, member Cottington made the comment to wait until the arborist comes on board and let them do the work, uh, Chair Ramos said that the tree board was responsible for the inventory and the fair trees, as the tree board membership under the Trees Day USA classification, uh, member Terry Burney Desette made the motion to delay the tree inventory until July, let there's an arborist on board, and member Cottington, um, seconded that. And then there was, member Cottington also made a suggestion to identify red, white, and lime leaf in the city, uh, Chair Ramos wanted to do a mini survey to identify dead or damaged trees, and run to city manager rule for a solution, and then member Burney Desette withdrew her motion, and then Chair Ramos, um, said she wanted to do a mini review of the in, of the inventory that involves visiting, and so on and so on, and then changed it to preview. And that was the listing of the motion, and then also later said she wanted to get materials regarding overgrowth, um, and make a list of home addresses, which probably, that was a test of...
My recollection, I thought, was that we're gonna put off the, the big tree inventory, so we hire somebody, but there was kind of a mini review of overall situation, or just a mini review of something.
Damage to...
Damage to, okay, it's gonna go forward, like, now, I guess, so, that's what I thought, but...
We were gonna wait until July so that limbs could keep following.
Okay.
And, and it was safer to go through.
Okay.
So, thank you, that's, that's different from...
We can watch the video if you need.
Can we just change it now?
You could just do on next meeting, approve on the next meeting, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, move up to the minutes.
Now, just, we'll have a month, then we'll watch the video, you know, just to make sure, and then, um, y'all can approve those minutes, along with this mini minute of the next one.
That's, no, I, I tr, I trust Suzanne, it's not about, but, it's about the language that was translated into this order, because it's different. I mean, if, if we start surveying it in July, it's gonna be darn hard, right? It's ninety-three today.
Is there...
And so this says, when an arborist is hired, and we haven't started doing the interviews.
Right.
In fact, it's the next agenda, I have it on my list, to, I don't know if I need to go there, but, you know, to start talking about how we're gonna interview, who we're gonna interview.
Well, that was the actual motion that was done, that, that is her exact words, that, um, to delay the tree inventory to July, once there is an arborist on board.
That's the section, once there's an arborist on board.
Correct, but that was her motion that she stated verbally, and so that was the motion that was voted on, and so it has to stay that way.
Then, we'll put it on the agenda for next one?
Sure, we can, we can double check and make sure that that's the exact wording that she said.
No, that's all I wanna check.
Okay, what do you want to check?
I just wanna do another motion to change the wording.
So you would be rich, that, well, so...
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do the, uh, vote on the minutes, if you want to, or let's, or, or we can bring those minutes next time, and then...
I can file a motion to start the mini survey in July, rather than waiting till there's an arborist in place. That's, that's the controversy, I mean.
Yeah, we, we would have to wait to the next meeting to, to have that, because it's not a, a, it's a item on here.
Right.
So, um...
Thank you for catching this, everybody, so, so I guess I'll vote yes.
That's set in the, I have it in June, or, mini survey in July.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a agenda lined up, so y'all can discuss that, and vote on something to start earlier if you want.
Yeah, it's started, we'll meet first part of June, sort of, you know, sometime in June, sort of the next day.
Yeah. You got it.
Okay, that, so, I was the last one that needed to vote, and everybody voted, and I, so, yes.
Okay, that was the word.
Right?
That was the word.
Yes, so we run. Okay, um... Thank you. I simply understand why I'm being a little bit... Yeah, yeah. Voice yourself.
Right.
Right. Okay, so if, uh, we can move on from that, then we can have our reports from our different officers. Just one, we, Brent, fully?
Yes, I don't really have any, anything new from the council, um, nothing that took place that I recall from the last meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Then, city manager?
Uh, the only thing I have to report is that the arborist RFP is online, and we have also put in an ad, an ad in the Wimberly View for the arborists as well.
Are they getting the responses?
Not at this stage.
Why don't you put it in the one O A P, does that, oh, I went to the Daily Record, the San Marcos, wow?
No, just whatever we do.
I can only do it in the one O A P.
That's the newspaper that we normally do, and then we're going to, we haven't done it yet, but we are sending letters to tree companies that have done, um, work for us in the city, and so we'll get those out, um, very soon, so hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, we'll have, uh, have ten or two. Um, I, I know they are still very busy, from what I hear, and so, wouldn't, I'm, it's sad, you can't get anybody to do anything.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, I mean, especially, I mean, but, when they have plenty of work, it's hard to get anybody to work.
And if they do it, they charge you a lot.
Right, and, you know, and we're not paying a ton, and so, where would you rather do is, you know, get paid a ton, or, or, or do part-time for the city, so, we will keep it open, we'll keep, um, pushing it out there, and hopefully we'll get some applications in for, um, that position, and we'll just have to wait.
I think it's a twenty-four.
Yeah, we'll probably extend that.
People work is often hard, or people who work, you know, get through, unless they're a big company, you know, it just seems unfair to me.
You mean, they've worked for the, for the RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the advocate, to go through the authorization and turn it in.
No, yeah, the, the RFP is really not that.
Not that long. Well, then I won't create any more excuses for anyone.
That's right. It is, it is relatively simple, and I looked at some other RFPs out there, and it's pretty much in line with everyone, it's five required, six requirements, but they stand out.
Which includes resume, and working experience, and...
Insurance, or something like that.
It's important stuff. Okay, so if we are finished with that, without further discussion, we can move on to the first, the second item, which is, um...
But, but you need a city secretary, yeah?
Oh, a city secretary, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Uh, real quick, Cindy Jones went to a, uh, gardening get-together in Canyon Lake, and she spoke to them about our Arbor Day here in Wood Creek, and there are three vendors who were interested in participating, um, little, I can't read the name, um, I'm a friend here, and he's too, and I can pass this around, um, there's several products in here that I know y'all would be familiar with, um, and some of those vendors, or all three of these vendors would be willing to set up a table or booths, and some other products or trees, or, you know, these are all national-based vendors, so they did request that if we are interested in having them come as guests for part of your Arbor Day, that we reach out to them fairly soon, um, so that they can put us on the calendar. And then Ace Hardware in Canyon Lake did this, and, um, uh, so Cindy was thinking, maybe we could talk to y'all, I mean, could talk to the Ace Hardware here and have something like this created for...
Okay.
Was it a Lickie Boy?
Really?
Last year they gave all those bags.
Yeah.
And they had a closet.
I don't get it, I mean, I don't get it from a summer shirt, what does that mean?
Oh, spring alive. Play on words.
Yeah, just play on words.
Oh, okay.
Plants are, is that the same Canyon Lake, it could be.
Winter off.
Three days, roughly?
Or Wimberly, 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 yeah, probably Wimberly, to be honest with...
Hmm.
I probably already said that.
So...
Be sure, sir.
So who would be specifically the agent, that we would connect with, the vendors specifically, or Cindy Jones?
Um, I can reach out to them and see what their availability is, and, you know, introduce you as, uh, tree board chairperson, and tell them, I'm just the initial point of contact, and then after that initial email from you would be the contact.
Okay, so you'd be the point person to begin with?
I, I think she tried to be the initial person, but there's someone on the board needs to take that over, we need to fix that off, the staff's back, and they're playing...
So...
We can do that, you know, just talk to those guys and get them set up where they come see us going on Arbor Day.
So is there any discussion, God, this is great, this is wonderful, that she did this?
Yeah, and she was very nice with her.
Very nice. Um, seed starting guides, Jeanette Cypress Pointing, and Sam Gibson, I don't know what Sam is supposed to be.
Y'all had already decided on a date, right, for your Arbor Day?
Yeah, we were.
So it's on our, I'm the third, I might be the first.
So, for now, is there any discussion on this? Anybody have any comments, or you wanna make a motion on anything? Well, these are just points to...
Great.
We're discussing, I think, the day, our Arbor Day. It's on a Saturday.
It's November four.
Yeah, November four. Um, so, I think I put on... Yeah, I, on, on new business, I did bring it up, just that, so we can start talking about Arbor Day, I don't wanna jump there right now, should we postpone this discussion?
Yeah.
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 Thank you very much.
There your RFP, this is what's in.
Oh, thank you.
And it's the documents here.
What category is it under?
It's banana, or RFP, I'll show you.
And people know what RFPs are?
Yes. I think, yeah, I do, yes, contractors and vendors, they, they know what RFP is.
Okay, great.
Highlighting.
Oh, that's lovely, thank you. I love those, very nice. Alright, well, thank you for this, and so now we can move on to item number two, discuss, unless there's something else. Checking, following the...
Yeah.
Discuss and take possible action on a P Y meeting with car flock, blocking, and guest speaker and overgrowth specialist, and I'm gonna, over to, for me?
Actually, we tested couple, and he was always very perspective, um, and he did suggest that Arbor Day, November fourth, that basically when he tests, uh, Arbor Day, Arbor Day. Um, I, yeah, I've seen some following questions that you had mentioned, um, yeah, would trees still have their leaves, um, if we took a walking tour, um, you know, get any ideas where he spent a lot of time in Wood Creek and Ludbrook, and, um, I didn't really get regardless of those questions, um, but it appears that he would be available to us Saturday, November fourth, um, I didn't share the, the time, um, or, you know, where, where it would be, that new vet teams, he's open to working, um, he was interested that we were trees sitting USA now, uh, that we were recognized, um, uh, and that's about, I asked if he had any ideas of, um, locations, if our location or activities had been successful in other areas, I didn't, yeah.
Ma'am?
May you win. Of course you can.
I spoke to a couple of residents off in Dulittle, just because I was already back there surveying the golf course, and one of the residents volunteered in the back of their property for this presentation. For your, there's a clear delineation of trees that were treated versus local trees on the golf course. So if you have a location, if you want...
And there'd be plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they would just walk. Okay. So, um, so, concern that I would have about that is the lack of restroom facilities. We're gonna have an event with a lot of people.
Well, I mean, the walking tour may be different from the actual event, you know, we could have the Arbor Day here, the walking tour there, I guess, I mean, you know, where are we thinking of having Arbor Day yet?
Yeah, that's item number five. They're all kind of tied up, I think, by sign.
Well, since you're, you're doing, you're talking about doing, uh, car blocking on Arbor Day, I think it's okay to kind of blend those right now, if you want, it's your agenda, want to.
So, um, thank you, so maybe as a discussion, we could talk about, brainstorm some ideas about what we want for this event, you know, what we wanna present, along it would be, how we... You know, what we want to present along it would be how we would advertise. You know, I guess those are just some initial thoughts that I have. And, and if we were to have a separate event from Arbor Day. Where people who didn't want to go on the tour could have a different setup with information tables. And some of the offerings that we had last year.
So where are we thinking of having Arbor Day yet?
So I asked the mayor if he had an idea and he said it was up to us. That he was there to support us in whatever dream we had.
So Camp Young Today, is there a possibility in November?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would be great. The mayor also said that he would be happy to approach them about using their space if we decided we wanted to do that.
Easy. We had a good journey off to the. It isn't, I don't know, Camp Young today, you know, layout of it, so it would be inside.
Yeah. There were, there was many presentations inside, uh, but most of the tables were outside. With the location that you're talking about, it's really directly across. So it would be possible if the walking tour and car blocking, you know, even started there. And then you could just walk across, people could park at Camp Young Today. And then walk across for the walking tour if they were interested in that. Um, because that's very nice stuff that's been offered back.
I guess there would also be, there's one thing to have a venue, there's another thing to have all the, the. Generosity at Camp Young Day ahead last season. And I don't know if that would still be an opportunity or if people would expect that. You know, I don't want anybody to expect anything. I'd rather have an approach of how kind you are towards your space. Rather than, well, you also have hot dogs and hamburgers.
You know, while we had lots of activities, there were coloring sheets for the children, but they really weren't that interested in it. Um, there was a petting zoo, uh, which I think people came just for that. But I don't feel that those people showed that much of an interest in what Arbor Day. They give that, um, you know, all of the booths set up for the tables. I don't know that many of them were at the table over there. So I think it's really what we want for that day if we wanted to be, you know, for children, you know. Yeah, we start from on the trees, but even when Jacob planned the tree, there were maybe twenty people out of their home vans. That went to see the tree planting for ensuring that the people with children were at the petting zoo. And then they came for, and then they came for the food and the pool and the pool. Yeah, it was yay, free food.
Yeah. Well, some people did appreciate it and the information.
What kind of turnout was that? I mean, I guess I'm a select.
I don't think there were more than, what, seventy residents?
You've not come to any, I don't, I'm not good. How was it promoted?
Um, Chris had some, some. We also.
Online, natural.
Yes. But I think, um.
And there was anything in the paper or was there?
Uh, I think after the fact there was. I'm not sure if there was prior to. But, um, I don't know, I think, yeah, people whenever anything is free and we have a tree giveaway. And those were all taken.
That's a raffle.
Oh, a raffle for the big tree and then we had little trees on this nice, it was hard to have it on day. But we had some things that people could take. And here's that from AIDS that were giveaways.
What have they done?
Um, it was some information, uh, and there was the Wood Creek cup within some of them. Uh, and some of them had that nice look, but, um, you know, with all of those, we have like, what, forty of those?
Growing green.
Yes.
If they had search of those.
So there was some nice giveaways that the person came.
I think it would be important for people to, um, be able to know how to plant a tree. Uh, because people just go for the depth when you have to have the width instead of dwell as the depth.
And yes, I Jacob was so kind.
Yes.
And Debbie, Deborah, you know, dug the hole before and there was that demonstration. But very few people, I think, that were attending the function, gravitated to them. Uh, which was.
Do you think more people were gravitated towards it if there was more, um. Things that were there for children?
Yes, we did totally last year and I think the people that came with children, I don't know that that. Is there, many of them went to the tables where there were master naturalists upon the stage area. Um, I don't know.
Is there any sort of.
Yeah.
To announce?
Jeff was announcing.
Jeff was announcing. Yeah, but standing, you know, Jeff here, I'd like to make a suggestion. I think right now we need to just decide where we want it to be and how we're gonna arrange some of it. But we can have more meetings to discuss the particular, the details. About children's tables and petting dews and swimming pools and whatever, and what we want, how we want it to be. And I think if we, um, just decided that, then we could discuss more fully next time. I could put it on the agenda again. And we can use this time for us to just kind of decide for ourselves what we want. And, and then make it happen. And, and, you know, work with vendors, which vendors we want, uh, what kind of entertainment we want. Um, how we're gonna advertise, those kinds of questions can go on the agenda for next time. What do you think, true?
I think you guys should kind of go into a consensus of let's look at Camp Young Today and then also look at the, uh, the site that's right next door to that, or the, the walk. And, and explore that and then we can backfill all the details once we kind of nail that down. Uh, is that what y'all are thinking or?
Yes.
Okay.
So to begin with the walk, maybe in the morning and then move on over to Camp Young Today. And this will also give us time to ask the mayor, he would talk with, I guess, Danny or somebody that he talks to. There, who can make a decision about what they're gonna offer.
I can check with Jeff and ask him to check with Camp Young Today.
That would be wonderful. Any motion for that?
Would they have? So, um, do we have a, a, kind of an idea of what possible hours we may want to do this?
In June.
No, this is November.
So if we were to start, say, around nine in the morning or ten?
A little early.
Yeah. Ten and, and then this could be maybe.
Maybe ten to two, I'm like that or?
Ten to two for the entire event, but the walk between ten and eleven or something like.
Okay. Then I would give Dorothy some, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, if it starts at ten, maybe have the walk at eleven so people have a chance to gather and.
Yeah, oh, good idea.
So Dorothy, that gives you some.
To get there.
Details to sure, blocking in, because it's probably good to go on his calendar for that day. So yeah, say we're looking at November the fourth and around eleven. The location off of Dubal. Unless he has a better idea.
And, and to also ask if any kind of food might be offered by Camp Young Today again.
If you want.
If he can provide, if they will provide food.
Okay. If not, we can bring a, Jeff will bring his hot dog, it'll be all over there.
Those rave reviews.
But we're so happy with that. So if we were to do a schedule from, say, ten and ten gently, from ten in the morning to gather. But maybe explore tables and have the vendors set up five, nine, twenty-five. And vendors and information tables, walk at eleven, then return around twelve or twelve-thirty from the walk. To possible food offering. And then, um, we can decide what other activities, but go till two o'clock. So just as a frame.
Um, I, I did some research and a couple of things, um. Stuck out that we, what if I was having an Arbor Day birthday party? I thought that would be.
What does that mean?
Well, if just you have, have a sign that says Arbor Day birthday party from whatever time they're gonna have it. That maybe with, you know, in conjunction with food. And have, the other thing, and I don't know how this works, so Dorothy would be better, uh, of having, um, like, um. Rice Krispie treats. That out. For, that is for part of the party for the.
And the limbs.
Huh?
And the limbs.
It would be the second annual Arbor Day celebration and birthday party.
Yeah.
That's fun.
Also, the other thing as far as kids are concerned, and I've done things, much on this. Uh, we're giving for, um, uh, tattoos of trees for kids, you know, the little pink. Big tattoo, I'm a tattooer, I have big tattoos, but by the way, I'm heading for where they do. Pick on tattoos.
So you could suggest that these are really good ideas?
And also a stamp, a tree stamp. You know, kids want that, you know, the kind of thing. Do what's down.
So, so we could save all these ideas and then finalize them maybe in the next meeting or so. So, and come up with a name. We can also vote on that next time.
A name?
Well, you're suggesting birthday party, Arbor Day birthday party celebration.
Well, just Arbor Day birthday party. And that, you know, birthday party, kids see that, we want to vote that. Don't cave. They'll be blessed with the trees.
So we could decide on a name, maybe at the next meeting, as we gather everything that we're gonna offer. You've got some good ideas and, you know, really like Rice Krispie.
Yeah. You don't have a cookie cutter?
A cookie cutter, yes.
One that I made the cookie. Cooking for tree. And then the leaves were on top of their cooking tree.
Yeah.
So.
And then individually wrapped the leaves.
Yeah, have, have.
Yeah, they were laying on such a ditch.
Yeah, they're making fun. Not fun. People are not so interested.
I think the people that came really enjoyed it.
Yeah.
The food was very nice, the people were so gracious from the beginning.
Yeah. And they provided all that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And that's some food and that was.
We had cake and ice cream. Ice cream cups?
Yes.
That's not pretty fast. We had ice cream in a cooler that, and we had. Wow, so, um, we had a lot of ideas here. We came up with a frame for the program. And mostly to check in again with Carl Locky to firm off some of his plan for presentation and how we roll it out. And then to also, um, discuss this again or further act for any action in the next meeting or so. And we feel comfortable with, um, telling Carl that we're hoping to use, um.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, and try, because we were at. When Dr. Mayor. Okay, so is there any motion that needs to be made here?
I don't think we need a motion. Yeah, I think we've got direction.
Okay. So this was just discussion and brainstorming. Yeah, I hope you don't feel like I've cut you off, just in the service of time. Um, we can gather all right, the ideas at one time, okay? I guess I don't really understand. All right, so, um, number three. Review the tree board involvement in the Earth Day celebration on April twenty-second. I thought it's important after we do an event that we just process it a little bit. And talk about what was, what worked really well, what we could change, what we could improve, what we need to get rid of. That kind of conversation. And I always want, you know, feedback, maybe I need this feedback. So I'm wondering if anybody has any thoughts about, or anything to offer this particular item for discussion?
I thought the location worked out very well, uh, because people stopped by, who were just walking their dogs. Um, and I think that's the, uh, one drawback, even though they came, that's wonderful. You have every, that opportunity, this is something that, you know, people saw just riding by. Were together to make an effort.
To have to know about it.
Yes. Um, so I thought the location was.
I thought Suzanne. Amazing. Amazing. And Kevin's hot dogs and food. Excellent.
Thank you.
It was different. I noticed that people just brought food and put it in the taco. We don't, still don't, never brought those, do we?
No.
They were good. There were donuts. All right. And cookies. And Nancy. Those cookies, uh, it was just great. It felt like a strong community gathering. Yeah. Um, I have a, and Brent, I noticed that you were man on the spot. I mean, you were everywhere doing this, you know, helping set it up. And, um. So I would, and I loved that we sat around. Visiting.
Right.
We had, we did not have a quorum because nobody gavelled us in, but it was fun.
And it was nice being there with the master naturalists. And I, yeah. Yeah. Well, people would have been nice, more attendees, yes. And one suggestion that I have, I might have to find a boat. Um, if maybe have a sign at the entrance, some sort of. Something that would lose. Firecrackers or something there and so that people will know what they're, when they find the gap to it, they'll know what it is.
These are firecrackers in the tree. Yes, so many times neighborhoods have mine said in entrance area. Uh, like neighborhood garage sale. But if that's put on the stage twelve, you know, you have a creek drawing. That could be, yeah, something.
Didn't this, did you have a sign up there?
We had a sign up there celebrating Earth Day. Celebrating Earth Day with us.
Yeah, why don't you go and do something?
There was none there.
No.
No beloved.
I think we can make a brighter color.
Um, we had a Wood Creek banner as well. Oh, that's right. So, um, I think, I mean, some of the things, I ended up taking some of the master gardeners to my house to use the restroom. Oh. Because they needed it. And so we either need to get neighbors who are going to have people in their restrooms. Or, um, a porta potty, I guess that costs money. And.
There's a porta potty place not half a mile away.
That's true.
So that would be
Well, they also, the golf course has what is important to use their, what are they on about?
So, so that would be for Arbor Day. And people were always asking why the restrooms for that? You know, what we're talking about is from this time, at Arbor Day.
Oh, right, Arbor Day.
I'm sorry, Earth Day, if we decide to do it again.
Oh.
Right, or doing Earth Day. And so I think that it, for me, it would have been helpful if I had gone and scouted it before we got there to decide where to put the tables. And where the signage should go. It'd be nice if we had water fountain or access to water and we had coolers with water bottles. That was good, which um also would be nice to have trash cans and recycling bins. Some of us took stuff home to recycle. Some of us. Also
I always tell you that in full recycling.
But um, but this was, and I think more advertising, maybe more um with more notice, but this was kind of done at the last minute.
I think with the, it would be very own signage and maybe getting it in the paper, just a news release.
Yeah. Um, again, you know, I, I don't mean to criticize it, I was just looking at what we could to make it more comfortable for people. I love the location.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was right in the middle of the heart of Wood Creek, basically. And the thing about Camp Jump Young Judea is that it's removed. It's not as visible. Not as many people will come unless we advertise it to these people.
We can also invite the um, the editor or somebody from, you know, it's kind of a personal invitation uh to, for them to come to the That way of getting, starting to get noticed about things that Wood Creek does.
Couple of things I want to just emphasize real quickly. Um, whenever we talk about what we're gonna do better, it's what we're gonna do. You know, we want to get away from staff, what are they gonna do? And I don't think that's where y'all headed, but be thinking that way, this is what we're gonna do better next time. You know, I think we did pretty good. I understand a couple of other things that there was a lot on social media, there was a front page article in the interview, so we did pretty good on that, we could probably do better. Um I understand also there were a number of locations, I mean, there were people working down at the dam, or people working at Augusta Park, and were they working at another park, Creek Center Park, or was it just those two locations?
Just Augusta Park and um
The dam.
The dam.
Yeah, got a lot of work done.
There, there were probably fifty volunteers.
Yeah.
That's good.
That will work into a cleanup on that. It, basically the parks was down at Augusta Park. And then the residents of Cedar Point were down at the um Cypress Point. Cypress Point. Cypress Point was down at the dam. And then the aqua representatives were, were, were with both of those.
Yeah.
They were, so there were, there were quite a other individuals out and about doing other stuff on that day as well.
But did, did volunteers, I didn't see too many that would come for your hot dogs.
There was a lot. Yeah, they, all the aqua people.
I know.
They mostly came through, Cypress Point did not. Um and, but the um Augusta Park did. I know, we, we used up all the hot dogs that I could.
I mean, you buy. A lot.
Jeff bought them, so I was not sure.
That's a lot, huh?
Uh, yeah, it was, we went through a lot of, more than what I bought. The whole, yes. And so, um, and I probably could have cooked a little bit more, but um yeah, it was if, not everybody may have come down there, but a good majority of people filtered in because they were coming down around eleven. Some of them, some of the volunteers were finishing up. And so it was about from eleven to one that we had visitors down there um at different points. Eating. So, you know, it wasn't a twelve o'clock, everybody come here, it was kind of whenever we get done. I know a lot of people had other commitments in the afternoon. And so they had to get home and they couldn't stay a while, but I talked to a lot of them. And I thought it was a good good reception of them coming, grabbing a hot dog, and then they will basically leave because they have other obligations that afternoon too. They have some kids' baseball games and, you know, stuff like that, so.
So um also that's one thing that's no way about not getting the staff to do so much. It was a little confusing for me sometimes because it was the, the birthday was under the auspices of the KFC council. And we were just aboard with the table there, just like the Master Naturalists and and so there were a lot of decisions that were made. Um, yeah. I'm talking about those things. Yes.
What, uh, actually what happened was the city council didn't have anything to do with that. Uh, the Parks Board informed city staff who made a report to council that the Parks Department was going to clean up uh Augusta Park that day. And then we subsequently found out about the residents of Cypress Point.
Correct.
Uh, doing their own coordination. And then um when y'all made the decision to do your event at the Triangle, the it was just the city staff just coordinated the communication of what was going on. The city council didn't um coordinate that. They participated because they were volunteering, but they didn't uh coordinate it, that was all individual firsts.
Yeah, so, so thank you for that clarity. That is very helpful.
Hmm.
I think what I'm suggesting is it would be nice to have better coordination so that we know what we're doing.
Well, I, I think you knew what you were doing, you were gonna put a tent up and you were gonna have some things there for people you know, from, from the Tree Board, and you did that well. And then uh the Master Naturalists did their thing, Kevin did their thing, so sometime, you know, things kind of they may not be quite as organized as you'd like them, but I think you did what you were supposed to do, and I think the event came off, came up well.
Yeah, it was, though they are in that, so we need to have a little bit better, right, to get some more people help.
And once in a month, you know, this Yeah. So I think for it to be that successful for the first time uh with a short term, you know.
Yeah, that's something we can work on for next year on coordination, but it was the we didn't have anything to do with, um, that was uh Pat Rawlings came up, and the Tree Board came up with the Augusta Park cleanup, that was their ideal. Um, the citizens at Cypress Point, that was their own um getting their neighborhood together, that, that group over there. Uh, we were informed and we tried to get out the word for volunteers, and then, and then you came up, and then the Tree Board, they had the, the the event at the Triangle, and so really, all we did, City Hall, was to uh get the word out that there were these three places in the city that every, people were celebrating Earth Day. And, you know, if they wanted to volunteer, please do that and please come by the booth. But it wasn't any thing that city council or city staff really put together or was involved in at the very beginning.
So, so does it make sense to try to coordinate it a little bit more with Parks and Tree Board and aquatics and our neighborhood communities?
I, I'd say it makes sense, then you guys figure out how to do it.
It, it, it's hard, I will tell you, I think it would be hard because each group kind of has their, their, their own thing that they wanted to do. You know, the Parks, they wanted to clean up uh Augusta Park. Um, Cypress Point, they wanted to clean up, I mean, this is longstanding stuff that they've been talking about for a while, and it just don't happen that hey, Earth Day, great day to get together, next year? I don't know if it's going to they may not do anything. And so I think that this year, everybody wanted to participate in some way, which is awesome, because we had great participation throughout the city. And we had three different basically venues or three different events with a, a lot of people at different venues. But the great thing is that we all came together at the end, had a little hot dog, you know, and went home, but everybody, there was a lot of participation, and I think that's what you want. That maybe not everybody came to the Triangle and, or maybe not everybody went to Augusta Park or Cypress Point, but there was numerous people at different uh properties depending upon what their um interest was.
Yeah, and, and times.
Yeah, and time too, because some, some came for an hour or two, and then
So, um, so then I think I would really like to ask the question of the council if they are interested in having a coordinated Earth Day again next year. This one was successful. And there was a lot of volunteerism, and I really appreciated it because it was on the heels of all that ice storm with all those volunteers that we had for that. And so being able to pull it together and invite people in the community to volunteer to do work or provide information about the world to the table. You know, whatever it is. But just a question.
The question, if, if the question I can relate to the council is, do we want to do this again? And if you have specific suggestions, I can pass it along too, but typically the way I, I I've heard of these things is, here are my suggestions, here are our solutions, you know? And, and that's uh, because too many times it's like, we identified this problem, you go fix it, and it, you know, I don't, I hate to pass that kind of stuff on. If you see something online, and, you know, we don't like this, here's how we would fix it. You know, or here's how we're gonna fix it. So I, I don't know if you've identified anything specifically that you want to fix, that, then, then, you know, figure it out and we and give us a solution, but I'd have to convey to the council that we thought the event went well, we think maybe there could be maybe better coordination. We'll come up with some ideas on that if we can, but other than that, are we gonna do this again next year? You know?
Not better coordination, just more coordination.
Yeah, well, and then the answer to that would be, what are your suggestions? You know, what do you want us to do? Or what do you want to do? You know, because that's always what I'm looking for, is I'm not looking for, here's your problem, I'm looking for, here's a problem, here's the answer. Which is what I'm gonna do to fix it.
So, so I personally like the idea of having Earth Day as an annual event. It seems to dovetail beautifully with our mission for Tree Board. It isn't our mission, but every day is Earth Day. And we don't have to have a huge event, but maybe a nice event, and I'm I think if the answer is yes, if this council, this group wants to be involved in Earth Day going forward, do we want to make some changes or um take the leadership on it? Or create a proposal for it? I mean, I'd like to propose it to Parks Board, take the leadership.
Yeah.
Isn't that smart?
Right.
And that almost makes sense, because if Arbor Day is the responsibility of the Tree Board and we could support on the Earth Day. But if there, of course, there's a lot going on also. Uh, yes, but for Wood Creek to really have two important events, both with the environment. I think that's kind of the approach, you know, Wood Creek is interested in maintaining what we have and and pursuing how we can do that.
So we could write a proposal that we co-coordinate with the other board, city council boards, like the Campland Club and Red, and work together to sponsor or promote.
Yeah, we have to see if they're interested.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're interested, I think, just to tell us what you want and, and what, what you want to do, you know? And I could convey that to council, I'm sure that'd be fine, you know?
And you can do that next meeting, because today is just the review. So you can't see any action today.
Better reminder.
Yeah, we could start, I mean, that's, I, I'm sure the, the, the Parks Board and and people here would be glad to do, I like the idea of Earth Day in the, in the spring and Arbor Day in the fall. You have one in the beginning, you know, getting, and then one at the end. Um, and like you said, it was kind of a unique situation with the ice and so much that needed to be done still. And so next year, there not, may not be all the work done at the Parks that we need to need, although we can have a more traditional Earth Day. Um, you know that we, if y'all had one in the past, have y'all had one in the past? The, kind of a more traditional rather than Yeah, and so we can always work on it, and we'll, we'll, we'll start it earlier next year and um we'll try to coordinate it better, and of course, we always, whatever y'all can think of to make it easier to coordinate, but we'll we're kind of getting the Tree Board part of it and, and, I mean, y'all and the Parks Board all part of it, and we'll work on it sooner next year, probably like first of the year.
I have a question, if we were to get sponsors, like someone to provide a porta potty, you know, to pay for some of the things that you know, we had mentioned that we need, is there a problem with that?
No.
Okay, so um do they get any kind of signage?
If, if you want to do some signage, um it's whatever y'all come up with.
Okay, or they will provide it.
Yeah, or they can provide it, if they, you know, surely if they provide porta potties, like we can have, you know, if they have a, a banner or whatever, I have no problem with.
Okay.
Ace, and I'm sure that they would want to do something like this. This type of promotion.
Yeah.
Ace Hardware, where um you know, have it and then their logo somewhere, you know, that's, that's common practice.
Yeah.
To have that, so yeah, uh, you know, get a banner or appreciation stick or something out there, and, and we'll promote them in our communications that thanks to Ace for their contribution to the uh two thousand twenty-four Earth Day. Come by and get a cozy or a t-shirt or a bag full of dirt or but I'm sure y'all come up with, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll promote it that way. It's, it's hard for us to go out and, that's where we're asking you
Right.
to, yes, whatever you can do, go get sponsors, and we will work with them. And we will promote their donations to the city by providing those accessories.
Great. So before we go any further. Um, we did a review of the Earth Day celebration, number three. We discussed Arbor Day celebration participation beginning, that's in a process, that was number four. And now we're discussing and taking possible action on Wood, Wood Creek Arbor Day, and we did that as well. So what we're doing right now is emerging, an emergence of all of those, so basically we're done with our meeting. I mean, we've completed our meeting. And I appreciate everybody's flexibility here in jumping, merging all these items. But what, so what keeps sticking in my mind is what Brent was saying about let the council know what they, what we want and develop a proposal and he'll present it. Did I hear that right, Brent?
Yeah, concerning what, Earth Day? Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, are you ready to present something now, or are we wanting to get closer, or would you?
No. No, we're not. But I, well
You're talking about Earth Day.
Talking about Earth Day.
Right.
About doing something, and we're back to number three, and I promise I won't be doing this in the future, and be grounded. So, back on number three. What I'd like to do is ask this board if they are interested in formalizing some sort of of um cosponsorship with a Parks Board to, um, to do an Earth Day celebration next year, based on some of the ideas we had today. Are we interested in doing that in a more formal basis? This is unofficial, but
Yes.
It's unofficial.
The way I feel about it is, if I had a Earth Day I thought what we did on Earth Day was, was wonderful, it was fine. Get a porta potty, um, get some, um, the cardboard, um uh, this, uh, trash things. And let it be what it is.
So who's gonna do all that?
Well, what, what will we do this last time?
Well, you made an Earth Day sign.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't do much. It, we should have. Things sometimes just have to happen, and they're not gonna happen indifferent whether you just bring it strong to death or whether you just let it happen the way it did before. or whether you just let it happen the way it did before.
So that's basically the question. Do we want to do something different, you know, with all the feedback we got? Or do we just want to leave it?
I said it.
You want to just leave it?
I said it for any program, don't fix it.
Yeah, I think we can do the same thing with that. You know.
But it was involved, I mean, the parks board, yeah, the parks committee, so they would still be involved. So it would be something to present to people.
I think I'm hearing you all saying, why aren't you saying?
I was, I was so sorry to keep speaking. Um, the only reason the parks did something this year, it happened during Earth Day, is because they're working on getting, um, play equipment at the different parks through that COZAC grant. So that was their focus of Earth Day, was to get everybody together to get those properties cleared.
Yeah, next year, I don't, they may do some, hopefully we don't have to clean up our parks. Hopefully by then our parks are pristine, pristine and clean, you know, but, um, so I don't foresee that as a issue next year of they're at one place, they're at another place, they're at another place. I, I, I would suggest is kind of wait until it's closer time, um, December, January, really start brainstorming. Okay, what, what do we want to do? And then if we need to bring in, um, you know, if parks wants to be part of it. Because they may not want to be part of it next year. They, they may be busy with doing other stuff. Uh, and then, um, if they do want to be part of it, then y'all have a representative from the tree board, with the representative of the parks board, and so they kind of do it all. And it might be next year down at our new Creekside Park with the playground, you know, or, or something like that. Plant a tree or do something for one of our new developed parks. You know, we're going to hopefully have a gazebo down at the triangle, maybe plant another tree on the south east side, yeah, southeast side or something like that, uh, you know, to kind of coordinate with Earth Day and also the tree board. That's just my, my suggestion.
Here, here's what I'm hearing, because I'm, I'm, when I'm writing down a step, I'm going to report to the council when I, when it's my turn. Uh, we're one, we're going to talk about Arbor Day. We'll be turned up for that. On Earth Day, what, uh, I'm, I'm, I think I'm going to, uh, report to them, and tell me if I've got this right, is that we, you know, we, we want to maintain flexibility because it's a long way away. And we think it went well, but there are a couple of things that, that we want to look at. Uh, first of all, we're, we're interested in working with parks or whatever appropriate other board, you know, to coordinate with Earth Day, you know? Uh, the other thing is that I think you guys felt like we could maybe have, uh, promoted it a little more. Uh, so we'd like to help work with that. And the other thing is that we think porta potties somewhere would be a good idea. Uh, also there's some, there's some sponsorships and we're willing to work to help on that, to develop that. And I think Terry mentioned that. So is there anything else you want me to, to report to the, to the, uh, to the council? Is that, sum it up or is there anything else, Iris?
I, I just mostly wanted to know if this board was wanting to do something else or something more or again? And how, how to do that? You know, I, I don't know that I'm willing to drive people to my house, remember the event, to go to the restaurant.
Well, you shouldn't have to do that. I mean, you get it because it's a,
It was in the heat.
You know, uh, but, um, you know, um, my daughter had to walk down to the, one of the potties of the golf course, um, and, um,
She should have asked me.
And my house was closer. I didn't even know that was going on.
Yeah. So, so it just needs some coordination. I mean, it, it, if it's, that, it does need this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does need some tweaking. Tweaking is a great word and it's active.
I can be more comfortable with tweaking.
Well, let's tweak it. We're not suggesting that we do a lot of it was simple community event.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the whole thing. Yeah. Community. K, I won't say the last word, but K I N is, keep it simple.
I love sitting under your Earth Day sign. You know, with the jewels sparkling and the wind blowing.
And, and we have it for next year. We're going to, we're going to put it out and put.
Well, maybe I'll put some more jewels on it.
There you go. The work is adding.
Good. You just have to change the bag of it.
Change the three, four.
So, so yes, we, we have some ideas for tweaking.
Okay.
That's a very successful event and we would be interested in doing it again with a co or joint venture with Parks Board.
Okay.
And I, I think I have a garden and there's always something to do, always.
Right.
Yes.
I know.
I know. There's always something to do. And so it seems like having a, um, a troop of volunteers that are gathered specifically for this event be a great use of community spirit and effort.
Master garden, simply get volunteer.
Yes, I know.
Sometimes they always need hours.
Yeah.
That's why they were there.
Yes.
We're also fixing to, um, get a community garden.
Right.
So, you know, that's going to be, you know, in, um, in the fenced area right next to the shed out there. Um, and eventually it's going to be moved to a better spot. But, you know, there's such a big, long, we, long leeway that maybe some of those people could volunteer and help us help you as well.
And master gardeners would do that.
And then, but I mean, there's a, I think it's a little bit early to start. I think right now we just know that we want to do it again and we want to cooperate or maybe some better, um, cooperation between the different boards. I think that's where we're at. And communication, yes.
And a porta potty.
And a porta potty.
Right.
And all, you know, if we need to find a sponsor for that, I can, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
We'll come back to that. I'll make a note with your name on it right next to it.
So I think on the review of the, of the involvement in Earth Day is that it was a great success and y'all want to continue it, uh, going, going forward is kind of the review that we, that we come up with.
One, one thing, I used to live at Cypress Point, but I never felt, I lived there for five years. But I never felt a part of Wood Creek. So, um, you know, I don't know if they want to be a part of, of what goes on in Wood Creek. But I think they should, you know, there should be some sort of, um, invitation, if you will, of, to ask them to participate.
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, I, I know what you mean. They, they are part of Wood Creek. Yes, they all have their own, you know, with, with them getting the volunteers for cleaning it. I mean, that was all, that area that was that. And so it's a, it's a closely knit group. Yeah, but yeah, we, we were surely, we want them to be part of it and we have a good relationship with them.
Yeah, and they have an HR department.
They do, they do. And so we will, we will solicit their, uh, participation.
So are you pretty clear?
I think I'm pretty clear.
I would add, if you have any suggestions?
I don't have any suggestions. I, I think, I think it's good. I've got the, the Arbor Day, uh, ideas. I want to talk to Jeff about, you know, Camp Young Judea. I can report on that to Earth Day. I can report on some, uh, ideas that y'all have that could get better and how we can help with that. Um, so I'm good.
Okay.
And then we can talk about it next meeting as well?
Yeah.
I guess, um, so, so I would just like to let you know that, um, we will have a pretty busy agenda for next month. That there are several important sort of topics coming up. One is the R and B interviews, if we have some applicants. And the other is the mini tree service. You're actually splitting up, just giving your heads up. So without further ado.
Announcements.
Are there any announcements?
Next meeting is June twelve.
Next meeting is June twelve, four thirty. Is anybody taking summer vacation? More European trips? Um, I don't, I, they, I think the ten, I should be.
Do you need a babysitter to go with you?
That's just.
Probably just right over Jessica's heart there. It's in his ear.
About your honor, July. Yeah, we're excited about them. Right, then I, um, am going to adjourn. Yeah. My cemetery.